Seven o'clock, Monday, September 9th. Call the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council order. Go call please.
Bergen.
Here.
Trinkow.
Here.
Kingas.
Here.
Share.
Present.
Waltstein?
Here.
And McKenzie and Rafi are absent.
Both absent. If you'd all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the agenda. Move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any council discussion, questions? All in favor of the agenda as presented, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Next item is approval of the minutes of the August 19th, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the August 19th, 2019, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any council discussion? Issues, corrections? Very none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes for August 19th are hereby approved. Our guest council member for September is Lynn Gents. And Lynn, if you would say a couple words about yourself.
Sure. I'm the operating partner of the Waverly Pizza Ranch. I've been in Waverly since 2006 and bought into the store at that time. I have a family that resides here in Waverly and have a son that now operates the Pizza Ranch in Charles City, which we just purchased and reopened in April.
Very good. I'm going to add one little comment to Mr. Gents' presentation. This is dated July 22nd, 2019, from the Pizza Ranch facilities. And it says, "Pizza Ranch Incorporated awarded its annual community impact award to Waverly franchisee Lynn Gents at the company's 2019 national conference held in New Orleans, Iowa, June 24th and 26th." So congratulations on your recognition and we appreciate it and I'm sure you do too, after all that hard work. You have all the rights of a council member, take part in discussions, ask questions, whatever you'd like. The only thing that they won't allow you to do is vote.
Sounds fair.
We'll move on to that. This is the time and date for a public hearing on ordinance 1065, an ordinance adopting the policy statement, connection fee schedule, and connection district plat for East Bremer Sanitary Sewer Extension 2019 project. I'll open the public hearing. Is there any oral or written comments?
There are none, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you. Anyone here that has anything to speak about regards to this? Seeing none, close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the council.
I'll move approval of the second reading of ordinance 1065, an ordinance adopting the policy statement, connection fee schedule, and connection district plat for East Bremer Sanitary Sewer Extension 2019 project.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. As I read through that bill, I see there's connection fee for nutrient egg for the south lot. I was under the impression that they were already hooked up to sewer.
So the south lot actually is going to be divided into two lots. And so when it's divided into two lots, the west lot is connected to sewer already and the east lot could be connected to the south.
All right. I was looking at the flats or the diagrams and things, so very good, thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Go call vote please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Trinkow.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Ordinance 1065, adopting the policy statement, connection fee schedule, and plat for East Bremer Sanitary Sewer is approved. Five, zero, two absent. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the proposed amendment number five to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Waverly. I'll open the public hearing. Any oral or written comments?
There were not, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you. Anyone here that wishes to speak to that? Bill, do you want to introduce it a little bit first?
I'd just point out that I know urban renewal plan documents and then TIF ordinance-type things are very confusing because there are really two different things going on. And this first public hearing is for the amendment number five to the plan. So the urban renewal plan is basically the document that says what you can spend your money in, you can spend your TIF money in. So we identify properties that could be benefited by urban renewal plans and projects. So that's why we amend, if we want to do some work in a particular area, we have to make sure that that property is added to the plan. We've added some parcels that are basically right of ways, and that's because we're using the right of way to install that sanitary sewer. And then we generally will add a property, if it's going to be directly benefited by the project that's being undertaken, because that way some of their increment can be used to help defray the cost of that improvement.
Very good.
So that's what we tend to do. It doesn't happen all the time, but we do identify those properties that are directly benefited by the project in question.
Okay.
So that's what this is, is an amendment to the plan, which adds some properties and adds that one project.
Very good, thank you.
Do I?
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience? Not opposed, public hearing, and entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-137. Right one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. A resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects, and adopting amendment number five to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
I was just going to ask if Bill could maybe, because it is, I think, a confusing topic for many and maybe the public who's not that familiar with it, if you could do a short overview of TIF and how it works and how it's beneficial to not only the particular property that we're talking about, but also to Waverly and Waverly citizens.
And perhaps also for some of our citizens with the acronym MEANS.
Since 1986, the Waverly city has been involved in doing urban renewal projects and placing properties within an urban renewal plan area, and then thereafter doing projects within that area. Some of those involve public infrastructure projects, like the city streets development, water mains, water lines, sewer mains, anything that's infrastructure that helps develop the city. What the plan is, is that you have to have property in the plan in order to benefit that property by a particular project. So over the years, it started early on, it's actually developed over time kind of differently than it was used when it was started. You had a lot of communities putting much more property in those plans than they probably should have, because they needed to be more surgical with what they did. So you had more properties that were put in that never got developed or never were touched. And so, but once it's in the plan, you can do projects on that particular property and you can leave it in the plan for beyond, and there's no timeframe in which a property can be in the plan. So now that you have your plan and you have properties in your plan and you have projects that you want to do within your community, then you have to see how you're going to pay for those projects. Now, you can pay for those projects like we normally do any project, and that's you can use sources such as general fund bonds, you can use other mechanisms to fund your projects. But what the legislature did when they enacted this was they allowed you to use a thing called tax increment financing, and that's where you get the TIF. So the tax increment financing is a way of using the increment in value that you increase by doing a project on that particular property. So if you had a property worth $10,000 and you do a project, it becomes worth $100,000, then $90,000 of that value can be taxed and that tax can be captured and used for your project. So what we do is, we now want to do this very specifically for projects and put properties in that we're going to be generally improving in some way or benefiting in some way. But the money that's then collected from the increment is placed into an account that the city has access to to use for financing. And what you do is you borrow money to do the project, and then you pay it back by using the TIF revenues that are generated every year. So you don't pay cash for things, you don't take your TIF funds and then just pay for the project, you actually have to retire debt. So what we've done is, in the last several years, we've done several amendments, and in this amendment, we've added back into properties that were removed from the prior plan and from the prior ordinance in order to put them back in to restart the 20-year limit on collecting increment. And we've done that because those properties really didn't get developed beyond what they were at the time that they were placed in the urban renewal plan. So we've done that a few times. This time, we're putting properties back into the plan that we had taken out, but we're not necessarily putting all of those properties into the ordinance. So the only two properties that are going back in the ordinance are the dealer sites, the Titan property on Fourth Street. The other ones are not, they're being held back, but if somebody was going to do a project and we wanted to provide incentives or at least provide some infrastructure assistance, we could put them in the ordinance in order to collect some of the increment that might generate based on what they're doing on their property. So there's probably a lot of people out there that are still confused, because it's still hard to go back and forth between the plan and the ordinance, which are two different things. Because most of the time, people assume that when you did the plan, you put everything in the plan, you put everything in the ordinance at the same time. And that's the way it used to be done in 86 and the 90s when most of the property was put in the urban renewal plan in Waverly. Now you're more, you basically are more controlled in how you do that. You put things in a plan that might be corridors that you can, like 10th Avenue, like Fourth Street reconstruction, like Cedar River Parkway, community projects like the W and other projects that were done with some city help. And that's where you get your funds to pay off your loans. When we've put properties in the past, there are times when we provide incentives to businesses that are going to locate here. Recently, we've done some of those involving the downtown hotel, the theater project that we voted on, that the council voted on, and other projects. When it was done originally back in the 90s, they were doing it for a lot of different commercial properties, ones that we're probably not doing as much of anymore, because a lot of times what you have is a new, if a new business comes to town, it's going to be a competing business with businesses that are already here. And so you don't necessarily give them incentives to come based on the fact that that would compete with existing businesses. Occasionally, you find businesses that haven't located here and that you really want them to locate here, and so you provide them with some benefits to come. And that's what we look at with commercial properties, because commercial properties are a little bit different than properties that are being developed by employers. If you have employers, you sometimes, you oftentimes want to incent companies to come in and build and provide new facilities here, so that you're encouraging them to bring their jobs with them and bring their property tax payments with them. So you provide some incentives that are taken out of that increase in property tax that they pay based on their project. So most of our money over the years has been spent on public infrastructure projects. When you look at percentage-wise, incentives have been a small percentage of what has been paid out by the city over the years. It's generally been the big projects like the Parkway and the Fourth Street and 10th Avenue and those kinds of projects that we spend most of our TIF money. And keep in mind, when we collect TIF funds, you collect them, or the county collects them and lets you know how much there is to request. The city actually has to certify the amounts that they're asking the county to pay them out of that fund, which wouldn't be all of it at all times. So sometimes it is, but oftentimes, it's not needed to take all the money that's collected. When that happens, the rest of that money just goes right back to the county and it's distributed to all the taxing authorities. So it is true that when we get TIF money, TIF money actually takes money away from, that would normally go to the school or the county. And we do this by letting them know what we're doing and why we're doing it upfront, and we have consultation with the county and with the school district. And we give good reasons why we think it's a good use of that money to do that particular project and use that particular increment money. So we try to be a team player with those two entities, because they do have to do without some of their revenues in that situation.
Bill.
To be clear, they're getting the same amount as they'd previously gotten from, because where that property value was is fixed. It's any increased value that they could not get. So we're not taking money from them that they are getting, they're just the additional that they could have gotten.
That's a big point. The key word is increment. They receive just what they were, this project probably wouldn't have happened without the assistance, you wouldn't have seen a gain in taxes without the assistance, so they're not losing anything. We're actually benefiting after a certain period of time, everybody involved, because there now is development that would not have occurred.
And trying to do this summary off the top of my head, trying to catch everything, but that is a very important point, because the increment we're capturing is not the base tax on that property, it's what's generated by that redevelopment or development of that property that we capture. And oftentimes, we don't, again, use it, we don't give back all of the tax that's generated in increment for incentives, we only give percentages of those. And we often use probably money that's generated from various properties around the community to do our public projects, because obviously, the public projects don't generate their own increment. So we're using increment from other properties within. But keep in mind that if we don't use property or all the increment in a particular year, it goes back and then it gets redistributed to the taxing authorities. So they benefit if we don't use 100% of the TIF money, because that's an increase in their revenues.
When does that, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
When does that TIF increment expire?
So the ability to capture increment up till 1995 was unlimited, so it would go on forever. And then after 1995, they passed a law that sets certain sunset. So most commercial industrial sunsets are 20 years. When you get into housing, it can vary a little bit more than that, it can be restricted to more like 10 years, I think, for some. So it is, and that's why what we've done is, some of the properties that were put in back in the 90s never got developed and never got redeveloped. And so if we want to use those in the future and benefit somebody that puts an appropriate new business there, we have to put them back in and start the 20 years over. But again, the 20 years doesn't start until we put it in the ordinance. It doesn't start when we put it in the plan.
I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, I just, I think it's always worth sort of reminding ourselves and maybe reminding or even presenting for the first time to the public, you know, how this works, because it is more complicated and, you know, sometimes there are, I think, negative attitudes associated with TIF. And, you know, certainly it's something that we want to look at carefully in how we do it and when we do it, but I think it bears repeating, I guess, for all of us, and so didn't mean to put you on the spot. But, you know, another thing that we might, and I won't have the percentages exactly, so I'm going to ask you to do this too, if you know, the taxing authorities and how the percentages break out between county and school, I mean, a city and county and...
The city is 30% are given.
Good rule is always 40, 40, 20, or 40, 40, 15. There's a bunch of them that make up the last five, community colleges, some of the state. So the city and schools are about the same, they fluctuate depending on the year. The county's around 15. It's different for every county, but that's always the rule of them, is maybe 40, 40, 15. And the last five is a little bit mix of a bunch of different little ones.
But the community college is a predominant one in that 5%, right?
Yes, the Assessor, and there's ISU extended, there's just a lot of different small ones in there, so.
So, Bill, you reminded us that the county and school district have a stake in what the city is doing with TIF. When you have these consultations, did you ever have the experience that they push back and say, "No, we don't think that's a good idea"?
I haven't since I've been doing it, since 2015. I think it's more likely because we've been pretty conservative since 2015. We're doing very specific things instead of large swaths of areas, because some of the early descriptions in the urban renewal plan were starting on this street and then over this street and then down to this street. And so it was just, you know, big chunks of property, not really identifying each property. What we started doing, mainly because I'm a lawyer and I think of legal descriptions, and it's easier for me not to go to roads to roads to roads, we started identifying exact parcels. So it used to be in the past, it was more of an area bounded by certain landmarks, and now we identify each parcel that we take in or take out. And that helps the county a lot too, because they deal in parcels and they identify parcels in groups. And they still have to put them in a certain area, but they appreciate having the legal descriptions and everybody can see them. We spent a lot of time when we unified our TIF plan between the downtown and the rest of the TIF, the plans, the urban renewal plans. We had to combine them, we found quite a few errors in legal descriptions that seemed relatively minor, but you found them when you were trying to identify and redo it all. So we've got a fairly complicated document based on what was occurring prior to 2000 with the way we put a lot of things in, like a lot of cities did around the state.
I guess the other part of my question would be, can the school district or the county stop what the city wants to do, or is it just a matter of giving you some advice so that you don't do something that's going to make them mad?
They basically can come back with, when you do a consultation and if you have a disagreement, their ability is to put that in writing and to make suggestions about what they don't want. And then that comes with it to hear to this particular night when you have a public hearing, and should be discussed by those folks that are in the room, and with the school district people weighing in and the public weighing in based on the fact that they have some objection to certain parts of what you're doing.
But the answer to that is no, Mike. If you want to do it, you have the authority to do it and they can't stop you from doing it. You just do your diligence and decide, but you actually have the ultimate authority to do it instead.
So the consultation really is...
It's just that.
Giving them some...
Deciding to be shared, it's just making them aware.
If we have any of those kinds of questions that occur, we usually send out, you know, our documents to them and explain to them what we're doing. You know, we want to work that out ahead of time. Nobody wants to have battles with the other taxing authorities. I mean, we want this to be a unified move going forward if you're going to put something in the ordinance, something in the plan. So, and usually it's a no-brainer, because it's like 90% or more of our money goes to infrastructure, like the street redevelopments and those kinds of things that everybody agrees is necessary.
So I have one question, looking this over. It looks like there's this special exhibit C, which is the agricultural land consent. I assume that means there's something different when you add agricultural land to the TIF and the unified plan. And this is just, we need the permission of that particular landowner to add him to the unified urban renewal plan, and that's all that's kind of going on here?
And it's the same sort of thing as the consultation, you have to identify and get their consent, or you have to show that they didn't consent and you have to, I mean, that has to be another discussion item that occurs.
Okay, so we could theoretically put someone's agricultural land in this unified urban renewal area without their permission if we could say we had a really good reason and somehow justify it?
You know, I'm not going to, I can't remember for sure whether that can be a blocking thing, because it could be, it's possible.
But in this case, we have his permission, so there's no roadblock.
We've only done this a couple times, we've done it with the property, the property out on the west side for the Champions Ridge project, and that was agricultural when we put it in the urban renewal plan. There was a property that was purchased, that was agricultural, up on 20th Street for residential development, and we put that in.
So is there anywhere else that is currently agricultural land that is part of this unified urban rural area? So currently...
Generally, we're working with the ag...
Well, and this particular plot of land, I believe, we're in the process of rezoning this anyway.
Right, we did.
So we already rezoned it. But it's still agricultural land for the purposes of this?
For the purposes of putting it in the urban renewal plan and putting it in TIF, it is agricultural land.
Okay.
And you have to get the consent, because if it's currently being used that way.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, discussion on resolution 19-137? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Trinkow.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Trinkow.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
Resolution 19-137, determining an area of the city to be in the economic development
area, carry 5, 0, 2 absent. Next item, first reading of ordinance 1066, amending the current Waverly TIF ordinance 1060 in conjunction with the adoption of amendment number five to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Entertain a motion.
I'll move the first reading, ordinance 1066, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Any background that we need to be aware of?
This is a fairly simple ordinance, we're just adding the two Titan parcels on Fourth Street and the parcel H, which is just the six-acre parcel which is being developed on the east side.
Very good, thank you. Have a council discussion, questions? Roll call vote please.
Kingas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Trinkow.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
Resolution 19-138, approving transfer of unused right-of-way parcel from Cedar River Parkway project pursuant to the purchase contract. I'll open a public hearing. Carly, any written or oral comments?
No, sir, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you. Anyone in the audience care to speak to this? Seeing none, close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution 19-138, a resolution approving the transfer of unused right-of-way parcels from Cedar River Parkway project to Timothy and Jody Griggs for consideration of $1 pursuant to the purchase contract.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Roll call vote please.
Share.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Trinkow.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
Resolution 19-138, approving transfer of unused right-of-way to Timothy and Jody Griggs, hereby approved, 10, 5, 0, 2 absent. Next item is a proclamation, which goes as follows. Whereas a day of caring has been established as a local day of giving back on September 11th, and whereas a day of caring is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give, and whereas a day of caring is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper on a day of caring and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Waverly, and whereas a day of caring is an opportunity to... And whereas the day of caring is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now, therefore, I Dean Soish, Mayor, and the City Council of Waverly do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2019, as a day of caring in the city of Waverly, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. In witness thereof, I have hereunder two set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Waverly, Iowa, to be affixed this ninth day of September, 2019. Would entertain a motion approving the proclamation?
I'll, uh, I'll move approval of proclamation proclaiming September 11th, 2019, as a day of caring in the city of Waverly.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any council comments?
I would just like to say that I would like to think that every day in the city of Waverly is a day of caring, but September 11th is a particularly, uh, you know, poignant day, and I'm, I'm glad that the people who organize this put it together, and I'd certainly encourage everyone to participate in it.
I think this has something to do with, with people from United Way are kind of spearheading this, if I remember right. Any other comments?
Your comment, Rod, reminds me, when I was a student at Warburg, we used to have something called Spiritual Emphasis Week, and the question always was, what about all those other weeks?
Okay, hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of the proclamation proclaiming September 11th as a day of caring in the city of Waverly, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Proclamation is hereby approved, five zero two absent. Public comments for any items, for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by a vote, voiced vote on a single motion unless someone from the council or public requests a specific item be considered separately. Item number one, pay request from VJ Engineering for the water main replacement 2019 in the amount of $820. Pay request from VJ Engineering for the Cedar Lane reconstruction, 2019, for the amount of $5,473.75. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the water pollution control facility improvements to 2020 for the amount of $19,950.40. Pay request from Stanley Consultants Incorporated for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements 2018 for the amount of $44,450.64. Pay request from Snyder and Associates for the 10th Street Southwest improvements 2020 for the amount of $3,298.50. Pay request from Snyder and Associates for Fourth Street Southwest Reconstruction 2020 project for the amount of $36,922.78. Pay request from K Cunningham Construction Company Incorporated for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 project for the amount of $315,876.90. Pay request from AHTS Architects of, for the Waverly Senior Housing 420 Building project for the amount of $3,054 to be paid by the Waverly Senior Housing. Pay request from Stagie Construction Company for the Waverly Senior Housing 420 Building project in the amount of $186,135.82 to be paid by the Waverly Senior Housing. A Class C liquor license for East Breamer Diner, a special Class C liquor license for Waverly Oktoberfest. Entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any council discussion on any item?
Just remind me, um, I know there's a reason for this, but we're not making payment to Waverly Senior Housing, but we have to approve the, the item. Why do we have to do that?
Okay, this is a city project, it's on city property, it'll be owned by the city, but the, the money is in the reserve funds of the Low Income Housing, um, Commission.
So, we've got a stake in it, so we had to approve it.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we have a board, Waverly Housing, Senior Center Housing Board, approved by the, this count, by the council, so, okay. Any other questions?
I mean, it isn't, well, I suppose we're not supposed to discuss here, never mind.
Just to make it clear, the, the money that they manage is the city's money to do low-income housing. So, it, it is our, our property and our money to, and they administer, or they, they write, make recommendations in this body that approves that.
So, this is kind of, this is oversight on our part.
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the consent calendar, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Consent calendar is hereby approved. Regular business item number one, Resolution 19 dash 140, a resolution approving the Iowa-Northland Regional Transportation Authority's Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, program agreement for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension in Waverly, Iowa, along 10th Avenue Southwest from Heritage Way, Iowa Highway 3 to 16th Street Southwest. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 19 140 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
Can we get a little background on what's going on here? I'm getting kind of lost with the, all the TAPS and the SRT funding. What are the two different types of fundings? And it seems like we're applying for money so that someone else will help us pay for this, but we don't want both of them?
We can't, I understand we can't receive both of them.
Yes.
The TAP funding is through the region.
Okay.
Through inter cog, and, and so that's money that basically block money, uh, given by the state to, to the cogs. And so the cogs then get to vote on which projects they think are, are, um, good projects and deserving of the funds. So, uh, we did that, uh, we were awarded funding through the cog, however...
That's the, that's the TAP money.
That's the TAP.
Okay.
Our cog's policy is not to pay for engineering expenses, only construction. And that, that's a local or, or regional policy decision that, that is agreed upon. The state recreational trails funding does allow funds to be used for engineering, uh, design, and construction administration. So, um, we are making, have made application for state recreational trails funding. If awarded, then the regional TAP funding would be, would, would go back into the pool of funds available for other more regional, uh, trail-type projects. So, the benefit to the city is, I, if I got my numbers right, about an additional $35,000 in funding would be available through the state recreational trails program. So, it would reduce the local share by that amount. We were, so they use a scoring system. We scored the highest of projects not funded.
That seems to happen a lot.
We were very close, and, uh, we think that, you know, we have an opportunity. This is a fiscal year 2021 project, so there is opportunity to apply for state recreational trails funding, uh, about a, well, it's about eight months from now, we'd make application. So, we, we have one more opportunity to request the state recreational trails funding. And again, if awarded the full amount, uh, we would choose to, you know, the recommendation would be to take, take those funds, which would then preserve inter cog's TAP funding for another project within the six county region.
And it would reduce our CIP fiscal year 2020, 21 source of funds by $35,000.
Correct. Yep. Now, since we didn't get SRT funding this year, we feel that we need to...
We need to secure some funding.
That, hey, yes, we're, we're interested in the funding and we'll, we'll meet the commitments.
We want to at least secure this.
Correct.
And then if we do get the SRT, we can give this back, but we want to at least get this funding set up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike, I have a question. Maybe help me understand a little bit better, and maybe some of the council is interested also. But in your expenditures required in this particular case, design is so many dollars, construction estimate is $235,000. Project administration inspections by the city of $35,000. How is that? Where's that charged to? Where does the money come from, go to? It seems to be an integral project, part of all the projects.
That, that's correct. So, the engineering, uh, division within the city, um, is, is set up so that the default source of funds financing for that division is split between water and sewer. So, any, any work that is not assignable to a project is simply going to be picked up 50/50 by, by water and sewer, um, accordingly. So, if we are doing a trail project, we are going to assign our time to this project, and it will be, um, our, our time will be offset by, uh, the local funding stream, which might be local option sales tax, or it might be, um, CIP funding, uh, as designated here. It would not be really appropriate for the water and sewer fund to cover the engineering admin, project administration on a trail project, or a street project, or work in the cemetery, or golf course, or elsewhere that we provide support. So, by charging or assigning our time to these various projects as a billable service, we are able to, um, you know, very appropriately place, uh, the cost to the project. Additionally, because the city does this, when we get into a disaster situation, like FEMA, um, flood recovery, we also, uh, charge our time accordingly to the effort that we put in on various projects. It then becomes an eligible reimbursable expense. If we don't have a policy to do that, you can't just change it when you get into a FEMA project. So, this has been our vegetarian process for probably more than 20 years.
So, in short, Mike, the $35,000 that you have listed for project administration and inspection by the city, that's your estimate of the amount of time that city staff would spend on this project?
Correct.
So, when the bill, when whoever would end up with the construction on that, uh, they don't necessarily collect that $35,000 then? Say the construction, whoever constructs, builds, or does the construction work on the trail extension, they would not bill that $35,000 to the city then?
No, no, this is internal.
Yeah, okay.
This is internal, and it's not lump sum, it's, it's billed hourly. So, um, you know, maybe that when we, we actually get into the, the design, they may end up flip-flopping. It's just, at this point, it's kind of a... In the ballpark, guess, and, and...
But it's basically an accounting of your billable hours in an area that is not normally your responsibility. I mean, at least not water and sewer, right? Is that what you mentioned originally?
No, this is our area of responsibility.
Okay.
It's, it's what we do. But, you know, you think of it, if you were to hire, on, on some of our bigger projects, we hire consulting firms to do the, the contract administration, like the Cedar River Parkway. So, not only is the design going to be built towards the project, but in those cases, we're hiring out the contract administration. This is simply being accounted for internally. So, if we do the design internally, or the contract administration or inspection internally, we assign those hours to the project. Anything that is unassignable, like let's say we get into a subdivision project, then water and sewer are picking up those employee hours.
Very good, thank you. With that being said, roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 140, approving Iowa-Northland Regional Transportation Programming is hereby approved, five zero two absent. Resolution 19 dash 141, awarding the citywide asphalt patching fall 2019 project and authorizing the city attorney to review and approve the performance and payment bonds. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19 dash 141, awarding the citywide asphalt patching fall 2019 project to Heartland Asphalt of Mason City, Iowa, for the bid amount of $46,170.13, and authorizing the city attorney to review and approve the performance and payment bonds.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 141, approving awarding citywide asphalt patching project to Heartland Asphalt, carried five zero two absent. Resolution 19 dash 142, resolution approving change order number one, accepting the 2019 Bituminas Seal Coat Program as complete, and approving pay estimate number two as the final pay request. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19 dash 142, resolution approving change order number one in the amount of $7,608.89, a decrease, accepting the 2019 Bituminas Seal Coat Program as complete, and approving pay estimate number two in the amount of $18,723.43 as the final pay request to Blacktop Service Company of Humboldt, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
It's kind of nice to see that they're going to charge a $7,000 less.
Yes. Roll call vote, please.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 142, approving change order and final pay request for its Bituminas Seal Coat Program is hereby approved, five zero two absent. Resolution 19 dash 143, a resolution accepting the school pad ramp construction 2019 project is complete, and approving pay estimate number one as the final pay request. Entertain a motion.
Move, approve Resolution of, approve Resolution 19 143, a resolution accepting the school pad ramp construction 2019 project as complete, and approving pay estimate number one in the amount of $13,406.60 as the final pay request to Feldman Concrete of Dyersville, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
I went out and checked the pad ramp at high school, it looked good.
I just want to thank the students again for bringing this to our attention and providing the impetus for three, three pad ramps, I believe, one at the high school and two at West Cedar. So, thank you to those ambitious youth.
Talking about day of caring and community service, that certainly, no, it was within their school class, but that they were looking at it, but they definitely identified a need.
Yep.
I'd, I'd like to just comment on how quickly this issue was resolved, as my experience on the council has been that typically...
their school class, but that they were looking at it, but they definitely identified the need.
Yep.
I'd like to just comment on how quickly this issue was resolved. My experience on the council has been that typically these take several years to plan out and bid out and get finished. So my compliments to the city staff on moving so quickly on this that we were able to get this finished up before the next school year started.
Just.
Just.
Just in time.
And I'd like to add, speaking from a parent perspective with a child with disabilities in a wheelchair, I have to say that Waverly is one of the leading cities in Iowa that has really taken this on and it makes life so much easier everywhere we go.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Sheriff.
Yes.
Walston.
Yes.
Resolution 19-143, accepting school pad ramps as complete, carried five zero two absent. Resolution 19-144, resolution accepting the crack cleaning and filling project 2019 as complete and approving pay estimate number two in the amount of $6,359.53 as the final pay request to Kleesner Construction, Inc. of Farley, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion, questions? Roll call vote please.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Sheriff.
Yes.
Walston.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 19-144, accepting the crack cleaning and filling project as complete, carried five zero two absent. Brings us to reports from boards and commissions. Premier Waverly Law Board minutes July 8, 2019. Received into record. Ball Diamond Task Force minutes as corrected, August 4, 2019.
I read those. I was just wondering, is it possible to hear any highlights about, I guess Ann's not here, well, Tim's on that too, I think is a lot, oh, you're not, oh. About the August 19 meeting, are there any highlights before, I know it's not formally recorded yet with minutes not having been approved, but was there anything there worth noting?
Moving forward. Garrett has best information.
As I say, I don't know if there's anything to really highlight on that agenda. We spoke about advantages and disadvantages of two areas that we were looking at, and then, trying to think of the other thing with that. That was pretty much what was on the agenda for the 19th. Yeah, so I guess that's as highlighted as we know.
There are two key areas that we're looking at right now, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
So Garrett, you anticipate a date certain when the council might get a report from this group?
I think there'll be a report next week.
That's pretty certain.
It's a item for council action, and then still on track for a full blown report in October, so. Okay. Any other questions about the Ball Diamond Task Force? Civil service meeting minutes received into record. Senior calendar for the month of September is received into record. Staff comments?
I just wanted to comment that with the Waverly Day of Caring, the rail trail will be closed on Wednesday beginning at 7:00 a.m., and it'll remain closed all day until Thursday at 7:00 a.m. because we do have a group of volunteers staining all of the bridges. So they'll be out there. For the public, please obey the close signs and the barriers because we will have people driving on the trail, and it's not people who typically drive on the trail. So they are not, you know, they're not going to be looking for pedestrians or anything like that, so please stay off the trail that day.
Is there a rain date for that work in case something happens?
I'm not positive on the Day of Caring rain date. If it doesn't happen, then we will be looking for volunteers for a different day, but that'll be announced a little later on.
Very good. Thank you. Any other staff comments?
I don't believe so, sir.
City council comments?
I have a question for Mike, and I have a feeling it's really for the DOT, but can you give us any, any information on the roadwork that's being done from Redeemer Church south towards Kuna, and is that going to be a long range project? I see we're getting some real stack ups in traffic right now.
I think it's going, the schedule is to have it done before Thanksgiving.
And what are they doing? Is it just completely resurfacing the street?
Okay, so they're, it's a major project. They've done some bridge deck overlays further west. They are adding six foot wide paved shoulders. They are doing pavement reclamation, heater, cold in place recycling, and then they're going to do asphalt overlay of everything full width. So it takes a while to put together. Kind of figure, you know, if anything can go wrong, it probably will. And so, yes, they've moved over into the Waverly area just in time for school to start. Clarksville's probably getting it on the other end. So it's just unfortunate that you have a project that it started in April and it's probably going to take through September, October to finish everything up. So it's quite a substantial project, quite lengthy. They are going to sign the paved shoulders between Waverly and Shellrock for bicycles. That is the Rolling Prairie Trail connection from 10th Avenue over to Shellrock.
I can't speak 100%, but they did start at 20th and West Bremer today, but I think probably with their asphalt overlay because all the other work has been completed, bridge decks overlaid and all the reclamation and everything. So, but I did see flaggers and traffic packed up there today.
Will that be moving south of that intersection shortly, or?
I have no idea.
I'm just trying to make pizza deliveries through there.
Yeah, just, it's construction season.
It is what it is, right.
Yeah, it's either Waverly or Clarksville, and Shellrock's caught in the middle of it all.
Any other council comments?
I would invite anyone who wants to join me for a beer. I'll be at the Wooden Foot after this meeting.
Okay. Lynn, do you have any?
I just thank you for the opportunity to do this. I don't get to see the inner workings of the city very often, and it's kind of nice to have a front row view. So, thank you.
We certainly invite you back next week.
I will be here.
Okay. I have a question. Signage for the Parkway. I think I mentioned to someone that there is not a sign of any kind at East Bremer and Parkway.
It's coming.
It's coming?
There's still a punch list that they're having to work through. We did, one of the reasons why it's taken a little bit longer is we ended up having to special order some signage. It's larger than our standard street signage. It's also going to have the Iowa Highway 3 symbol on it. On the west end, where we have the Red Cedar Park Trail crossing of it, there will also be some trail signage. If you look closely, you'll see some sign posts sticking about a foot out of the ground. That's the sleeve. So they just have to drop in the upper part of it when they get it in. So we've given them a deadline of like September 27th to complete all the punch list items, so.
Now, a couple of people have said, particularly on the east end, they drove right past it because they didn't see anything.
We still want to go back to the DOT and ask about some advanced signage, so that, you know, like Cedar River Parkway 500 feet, you know, coming from both directions. We requested that probably six months ago, and they took a look at it and they preferred to take a wait and see approach on it.
Very good. Other than that, I have no other comments, questions. So I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourn, to adjourn, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We are adjourned.